When clearly in justice for all. When clearly in justice for all.
Ending. If you're here to speak about an agenda item, if you need to speak with the caller, please step outside the room. My record. Kristin, are you presenting? Or?
It's not in conflict with the CDC. It addresses the community need of protected land. It is required by changes because it is required due to the. So, yes, staff recommends approval and then Stephanie can go through and answer your question.
Kristin, question?
Yes.
Is this all the remaining properties for that or in the rural critical land that were to be down zoned?
Yes, this is so issues size, many of them are are small parcels that are more like islands in a sense. And that first one there is a property called the Adams Tract. It's on either side of the road. So page seven and ones that were purchased on the south side of Boundary Street, a little more in ones that were purchased on the south side of Boundary Street, a little more in town. So there is managed by the Public Works Department as a shoreline fish managed by the Public Works Department as a shoreline fishing. But I've gotten approval from their department director to incorporate it into the rule. So it's mostly marsh. It's just a little small grassy spit. So it's just going to stay open space. Property, it is a really thin piano key type parcel that property. It is a really thin piano key type parcel that is right off of Okati Highway. That is right off of Okati Highway. I think that's just north of, I think that's just north of, I forget what that piece, I forget what that piece. It also has some stormwater drainage off us. It also has some stormwater drainage off the highway. It does not have very good access either off of Okati Highway, so it's going to just remain open space. The next one is in addition that we call Barrel Landing. So all the T1 NP around it were several purchases over a number of years through the Rural and Critical Program. This was the last remaining in holding within that larger part, that larger piece of property. So we were able to acquire it and we're just turning it to T1 NP. So it just fills in our gap there for the whole rest of the property. There is no plans right now for this property to become a passive park. It's not to say something may happen way in the future, but I don't have any plans right now. There are two stormwater ponds on this larger conglomerate of parcels. Some point with all of the changes around Pepper Hall and the reparsaling and rezoning of everything down there, our parcel got got split into.
A more intensive use and more intensive use and is adjacent to a similar zoning of more intense and is adjacent to a similar zoning of more intensive use. When this gets download, down zoned, if the other.
Isn't that a gated community? Isn't that a gated community?
The Bermuda Bluff community is.
Pretty, I know when we did this last time, we did have it at a driveway that was being on that conservation piece of land. There's no disputes.
Yes.
But it was unclear and I looked on Ariel, I looked in every way I could. And, and I think that this property is adjacent to is between Blocker Field and, and that little house, that little mobile home. They now have some brick pillars. Anything else?
Oh, sorry.
Anything else?
Oh, sorry.
Any other comments? Any other comments, questions from the? Okay, well, we'll go to the public comment questions from the. Okay, well, we'll go to the public comment section for this.
Thank you.
And we'll call you back if there needs to be further explanation to the public's comments. All right, I'm going to read your name off and if you please come up to the podium again and introduce yourself.
Is gunfire. And we've had a lot of people come down, a lot of people come down and fish, watch the sunset, and I don't know what else they do. That's not hunting. So it's, I think we need better signage, which if they're going to have a passive park, we'll probably get that.
Thank you. Do you wish to comment on any of this as we go through these? You want to wait till?
The law enforcement officers to enforce our code.
Thank you. Thank you, Steph.
Before you step away, let me ask you a question about this because you're well, much more well versed on it than I am. What's, if this is approved and the signage is in place and we have a dirt road that's going down there, is there going to be a gate that will prohibit people from going in and out of there after dark before sunset to maybe reduce that impact of the gunfire and people back there?
Yes, we can. That'll be part of the public input.
Thanks, Steph.
Next, I have Ken Wilson.
This will be short and sweet. My name is Ken Wilson, Eight Front Street, next door neighbor to Jane Smith. She touched on just about everything I was going to mention. I just wanted to get my name in case she didn't, but she did a good job. The one, couple of things I'd like to say. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. You have another one up there? By any chance, because I have one more. Mr. Tom Sharkey.
It bisects two times, it dog lays two times across the 12 acre section that's bordering the Sun City property. And the owner, two years ago, attempted to tempted the section of the man that owned that was an employee, section of the man that owned that was an employee with the local security company is bringing out employees during the weekend and they were shooting semi automatic weapons on a makeshift gun range 200 yards from our houses. Okay? A week later, the next weekend, two of the men walked down and trespassed on Ms. Campbell's property and emptied.
Sure, go ahead.
I agree. We actually last hunt season had two young men set up camp right behind you to fill out a green space right behind you, to fill out a green space application because I think that that might be something of interest in that particular area.
Absolutely. If the chair would allow.
Yes, sir.
That's up to the chair.
Yeah, I'll let you speak. What I've heard in several comments regarding shooting guns and trespassing on property that they should not be trespassing on. I know at one time we had some assigned officers to peruse the purchased properties. I don't know if we still do that. Just we have just one officer that does that. There's what? Hundreds, thousands of acres? Yeah.
Nine, I think. Yeah. So I'm curious, where does that drain?
Yeah, sir, we're not here to have a.
Well, I'm just curious.
Discussion, but if you've got the questions, we can make sure.
All right. I'm curious about where it drains because I think it drains into the creek that goes through my backyard. So I'm just, I'm curious if that's going to increase the drainage or improve it. I think it's a great idea.
And all of these, then, as I indicated in the beginning, the next step in the review process goes to the Natural Resources Committee. And they have people who have worked very hard in the area arena for natural resources. Don't want to run off on all the environmental concerns associated with that. So your comments will also be a part of the public record.
With the comprehensive plan, they do not conflict with the provisions of the Development Code, the Code of Ordinances. They do address a demonstrated community need, are required by change conditions, specifically the conservation easements and fee simple purchases made by the rural and critical lands preservation program. They're compatible with surrounding areas and would not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment.
Second.
I'm sorry, then who have made a? Glenn? All right, we have a motion and a second for accepting of the.
With our implementation status I have for this year. Everyone get excited.
Oh, boy.
These updates from last year?
Are these?
Everything from last year and this year.
Thank you.
I'd show just everything from this past year.
What did you want to accomplish this evening? Just to kind of outline the status? We're listening.
All right. Juliana, would you like to read the slide?
Good evening, Commissioners. We have a very popular topic before us, don't we? Okay, so let's see.
Juliana?
Yes.
Did you want to introduce yourself?
I will.
Your position?
Yes, sir. My name is Juliana Zadik. I am the Environmental Long Range Planner for the Planning and Zoning Department. So I work on all things green space and resilience. So anytime we're talking about sea level rise or anything like that, I am working on those items. And I'm going to assist Kristin in the presentation once she figures out the technical difficulties before her.
I want to, I want to welcome you back too. We missed you.
Thank you, yes. And thank you all for your flexibility in the different space and figuring out what entrance to come in and getting folks in here. We appreciate that. Okay, so Kristin has been hard at work at collecting updates for the implementation of the comprehensive plan. As you all are aware, we are entering the time period where we need to make official updates that council will approve for our comprehensive plan. We're at that five year step. And so that's what we are kicking off. And I'm going to help Kristin give this up, this status report. So for our natural resources, our natural resources maps have been updated to show all of our green space properties, our critical lands, conservation easements and publicly owned lands not owned by the county. Stephanie Najid, who was just in here, did a really great job getting that map updated with our GIS department. And she, a few council meetings ago, presented that to, I think, the Natural Resources Committee. So that is something you can go online and see if you are interested in seeing the state of conservation throughout the county. And then the South Carolina Office of Resilience, otherwise known as SCORE, and the South Carolina Sea Grant are working on completing flood mapping. They received a grant from the NIFWIF National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to do watershed resilience planning and mapping in 10 communities in the Salcahachi watershed. And two of the communities that are benefiting from that are here in Beaufort County, the greater northern Beaufort County region above, up near Lubiko in north, and then the Sea Island, St. Helena around there. For our studies and data reporting, the Port Royal Sound Foundation developed a Level Two Water Quality Monitoring Program, which means that they can work with community members and train them on how to collect water quality data information that is sound. Everybody's doing it the same way and it goes back to the state to build our understanding of water quality in our region, which is a really excellent effort that they put forth to do that. The repetitive loss area analysis, this was done by our floodplain manager. This was completed this year. I have not yet seen it, so I can't give you an update. It doesn't give us plat specific or parcel specific information, but it gives us information kind of by general region. So hopefully, we know that our floodplain manager has access to it, so that's important there. The Ald Joy Drainage Study was completed, oh, it is to be completed in 2026. Lots of efforts going on in Ald Joy where we have regular flooding issues down that way. And then the Ladies Island Drainage Study was completed in May 2024. What's up?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then initiatives. So SCORE, the South Carolina, this is the South Carolina Office of Resilience and the South Carolina Sea Grant Initiative, that Salcahachi watershed group that I, or project that I was speaking about earlier, for all of the communities they're working in, they've created community action teams. I and one other county staff member sit on the community action team for northern Beaufort County. And then I'm also on the one, and Rob as well, on the one for the Sea Islands. So we're working with those teams in order to better understand the, not just sea level rise impacts, but what are other impacts that our communities are feeling with regard to all of that in these areas? And how can we start to implement some resilient solutions long range to offset those as much as possible? So SCORE again and Sea Grant are leading that initiative. And then the very bottom one down here, and this one's pretty exciting and it's still new and ancient initiative. But if, some of you may remember the Sea Level Rise Task Force work that happened back in 2019, right when COVID started to hit everything. That is what developed our Sea Level Rise, I'm sorry, that's what developed our long term resilience strategy. And within the strategy, one of the recommendations was to revive a group like the Sea Level Rise Task Force to take on regional issues collaboratively. So a group has been formed that includes several of our municipalities. It includes public, public utilities as well. So we've got Palmetto Electric involved, not Palmetto Electric, Palmetto Breeze involved with this group. We've been talking with the hospital and representatives at BJWSA and at Dominion. And so this group is working on advancing regional initiatives that everyone has a priority for. And we are developing a toolkit to help other communities within the greater El Cog region have, build capacity essentially to also take on resilience initiatives. So in some places, like Hardyville, for example, there's a really big push for stormwater management in Jasper County more broadly. And Jasper County needs help building capacity for all of that. So this group is going to help do that as well as identify grant opportunities where we can all come together to make our grant applications much more competitive because we're all working in partnership. But this, this is just formed and we are still figuring out our name, but we had recently settled on the Southern Low Country Resilience Collaborative, but that's likely to change soon. But it is an alive group and well, and there's a lot of very motivated people to get things done here regionally in the lower four coastal counties of South Carolina.
Yes, ma'am. All right, so with culture, we have historic and we also have agriculture. In January of 2025, STAN Tech completed an above ground historic resources survey that included the South Abroad and, oh, I should have put South Abroad. It included South Abroad and St. Helena Island. And then the county has received grants to fund a project that would update the 1999 St. Helena Island Cemetery Survey as well. So that one is about to be out for RFQ to look at different consultants for that. And then through the Rural and Critical Lands Preservation Program, the county purchased a conservation, a conservation easement on seaside in a Bennett, is that, on St. Helena and land protection funding through the Green Space Program purchased conservation easements on two properties that protected prime soils. And the county is also with the CPO, that should be done fairly shortly. We're just trying to make some pretty edits to it. But a Rural Land Owners Guidebook should be completed soon. And then we also have marine projects. These are real fun. So Ald Joy Boat Landing, that's underway. The Wimby Creek Boat Landing and Pier Design is underway. Ald Joy Float Improvements have been completed. Station Creek Float Improvements are in the permitting process. Factory Creek Pier Repairs have been completed. Broad River Fishing Pier and Landing are in design. And then the Marine Structures Assessment is underway currently. Yay, thanks. All right. Yes.
Talking about all of these boat landings, how did you determine which ones to do? I hadn't. It's a lot of use.
Yeah. I know, let me see. So this was all the things that have been implemented. So a boat, a boat landing study was completed October of 2023. So these are the marine projects from that list that have been completed as of September 2025.
Boat landing wasn't included in the study?
I'm not sure. I can get that for you and ask our engineering department. All right. These are real fun. These are our mobility studies. So Bluffton Parkway Study was completed in June 2025. US 21 Corridor Study was completed in August of 2025. SC 17 Corridor Study Draft Report is due this month. SC 42, SC 315, and Bluffton Parkway Extension will be completed this month. Northern Beaufort Transit Study will be completed in December. US 278 Corridor Study Final Draft is due July of next year. And then the Intelligent Transportation Systems Master Plan in association with LATS will include 14 corridors in Beaufort and Jasper County. So a lot of these were kind of spit out real quick around the same amount of time. And a lot of these were done with LATS, with the El Cog. Master Plan, so Northern Beaufort County Transit Master Plan Studies estimated to be complete this year or this month. Recommendations, oh, that's supposed to say from, from the 2010 Airport Layout Plan and Master Plan for the Hilton Head Island Airport have been implemented and work will begin soon on an updated master plan for that one. Kind of short for this year. However, the Housing Trust, Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust is no longer under Community Works Administration, and so we have our own Executive Director, Claude Hicks. So it's localized now as far as that position. Community Facilities, Transportation Resiliency, a roadway vulnerability study was completed in May. El Cog was awarded a Protect Grant to complete a transportation resilience improvement plan for the four county cog. Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority Master Plan was completed in 2025. This addresses projected future, future conditions. The Low Country Safety Action Plan was completed and adopted in October of last year. And Beaufort County also adopted the plan in a target zero policy. So then we go on to facilities. Energy Audit and retrofit programs were adopted by county council in June. The county received a grant to install seven publicly accessible charging stations. Trash compacting equipment at convenience centers were installed in Hilton Head, Bluffton, and Shankland. And Hilton, or excuse me, St. Helena Island is in the procurement process. The county is working with the city on an EMS co-location. And around 20 projects from Parks and Rec Master Plan have been completed, are under construction or out for bid currently. For Built Environment, Soloco has created a map that provides an inventory for PUDs and subdivisions to further pursue an agreed upon growth boundary for the area. And that map can be accessed on the county's website. And I can send out a link if you do not already have that. And staff is currently reviewing PTOs with this process of us updating the comp plan or doing our five year update review in relation to public facilities access as well. All right, last one. Spotlight St. Helena. So Hickory Hill Road Drainage Improvement is to be completed this fall. Sea Grant completed a study that included four wells that were located on St. Helena. A new recreational facility is coming to St. Helena. Completion of the facility is scheduled for August of next year. An assessment of the parks facilities and fields on St. Helena has been completed. The Parks Department recently installed a new playground at the Scott Center. St. Helena Drainage Study with that, the Hickory Hill is ongoing. Lost Island Road has been completed. And in ordinance to obtain right of way for legacy roads was adopted. And in ordinance to obtain right-of-way for legacy roads was adopted in July of 2025. And I just gave you a whole year's worth of work. So congratulations on your brain capacity because it's a lot. Next, so then we have our five-year update plan. So with this, we are going to be looking at what Rob calls our low-hanging fruit. And these are things that are, can be simply changed. So we update outdated action items. For example, one of our action items talks about an initiative for 2022 ballot. So we can either discuss that and see if that needs to be updated to a different year or just completely deleted altogether. Change in organizations and names. For example, DHEC has now been split into two different departments. So we would need to change that to Department of Environmental Services. New programs. The old one talks about the Rural and Critical Lands Program that is now more, we are more geared towards the green space program. So we would need to change some things regarding that. And then, so then we move on to our new policy directions. So the further refinement of implementing place types. We're going through and looking at the place types in that map with the comp plan and seeing if some place types need to be completely gone. If maybe we categorize them, some of them are easy implementation and some of them are maybe suggested for further on down the road. We're going to be looking at that. And with that, there's going to be a more emphasis on adequate public facilities. So things we could adopt with the comp plan are the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. All right, and then we have our comprehensive plan update process. So we kind of already completed the internal staff updates. That's what y'all just heard tonight. And then we are going to be doing our planning commission review. So we will be having a couple workshops in the next couple of months. We will need to schedule those and see what works best for y'all. But we're gonna have people within different departments come and discuss and answer questions about things that maybe are outdated, need to be updated because this is basically y'all's document at the end of the day. So we're going to be looking at all of that. After we get some of those comments, we're going to go to the public. And then we're also going to talk to municipalities and see if they have any input. So that'll be also with other workshops with the public. And then after that, we update it and we have more meetings and talk amongst ourselves with the planning commission and see what needs to be implemented. And then we take it through the process to be adopted. And that is that. Yeah, well, we said kind of November, but yeah, around then.
Just a couple of things from questions I have. The way you presented, you gave a status report and the criteria and stuff. It's a little bit different than what's contained here.
Yes.
Can you provide us with a copy of those pages?
Yeah, I'll send that.
Just to be more succinct.
Mm-hmm. And like I said, so those are just everything from, that I got from last. I think those may have been.
Wouldn't those be items for the comprehensive plan review?
We can look at that. I just don't, I know, was it kind of like how yours was added to the comp plan? Could you go back to the previous? And I think, um. Okay, yeah, that could be something that we can look at. I just, do you remember what year that was, that that was done? Sure. Oh, I think, I think we did have a housing thing that was adopted. I think Ms. Libby was working with that one, so I'll ask her about that.
Kristen, I just briefly went through this thing. And I counted roughly 49, give or take a few, what's considered high priority. What does that mean exactly in terms of time? You know, you would like to get your high priority items done within one of the update of the comprehensive plan, two years, three years? I don't even know what that means. If you understand what I'm saying.
No, I get what you mean. I guess it's just, yeah, the things that we need to prioritize as soon as possible. I don't know if there was a time, I don't know about the exact like timeline.
Let's go back five years ago when it was, the comprehensive plan came out. I'm sure there was a chart that said, these are our highest priorities, these are our medium one and low one. Did we achieve them? Did we not achieve them? And if so, why not? You know what I mean? That's kind of the high-level thing I'm looking for.
Yeah, that was all in Section 2, the work plan, which accompanies the comprehensive plan. These pages here, this section. It says, Action Plan, the who, what, when, where, how, funding, et cetera. And that all goes into consideration when we look at high.
Yeah, but I still don't see a result. I see what you're saying, but I'm not seeing.
Well, I agree with that. We need to match up high priorities with, have we taken action on them or not? And if we.
Why aren't we, you know, that kind of thing?
Are we, have we reassigned priorities?
Yeah, and I think that's something we can look at whenever we talk to departments individually and see what their priorities are exactly and why maybe they haven't. If that is the case, maybe why priorities have shifted and if we need to reflect that on our update.
Is the planning department satisfied with the progress that's been made over the last few years? Because I know we depended on all the other departments to come forward and implement those action plans.
I would say so, yeah. And I would say the same thing with engineering. They've had a lot of studies come out.
Is there someone at the county who's keeping track of this?
That's what this is. This is keeping track. Yes, so I am kind of on to them. And I'm like, do we have any update on this? But you know, I can't.
Yeah, I know.
Micromanage and make sure that they're following. But we do try to make sure that they are implementing things on the comp plan. That is.
Okay.
Yeah.
It on the shelf.
Yeah.
Gathering dust, yes.
Will we also update all the data in that third section that we use to compile and? Particularly at the issues of infrastructure and the development that's going on, the people ahead count. I mean, it's, it's way over what we could have imagined back in '21 when we hit COVID.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, you're talking about the further refinement of implementing place types. And from our perspective, if a developer comes and wants to do something that involves one of those, it's pretty hard to sit here and say, yeah, we'd like to go ahead and do that because it's a great idea. But if we don't know what's going on with these, you know, SC-170 road improvements, it becomes very difficult to approve of anything. So it'd be nice to know some of that stuff.
And I'm going to ask something too, it's just like Glenn was doing, I was going through this. And this is fluid. And I understand there's a determinate, determination, determination of what's high, low, and medium priority. But as we look at this and you look at the CPO, needs to be reworked and rewritten. It's a medium priority right now. We've all seen what's happened over the past eight months. It's going to rear its ugly head again, and it's listed as a medium priority. I would almost think that that needs to be elevated a little bit to get ahead of the curve of what is probably going to happen.
Okay.
And I don't know how, do we have input to that from what we see? Can we recommend that items be elevated?
Oh, I mean, like I said, this is y'all's document, so for sure, we can discuss that.
I want to add one other thing. I found the most effective way of coming up with a meaningful comprehensive plan was not through having groups come in here or having online surveys, but actually going out into the community, sitting down with them. You know, I can remember a number of meetings we got cornered and a lot of things came out. And it made a big difference in some of the things that were put forward and the prioritization. I'm thinking particularly in St. Helena.
Yeah.
So I mean, I would encourage that we do that again. As hard as it was, but it was hard, that we try to do that again. And you all are going to accompany us on some of those trips. Between 200 and 400 people would turn out, like at St. Helena and at the library and so on.
I have a quick question about your feeling. I didn't see enough to satisfy myself, and I'll go back to the atlas because I know the numbers have changed, about traffic impacts. And how's it worked now that the county is doing its own traffic impact analysis or having? We had a presentation in the conference room of the old county building. It was just starting, that there is going to be a consultant who's handling now all the TIA's rather than having the developer do it? How has that been working out? And is that going to be addressed as a new policy direction?
Yeah, I think we're all saying about the same thing. I noticed when you went through your report as part of implementation strategies and where the status was, there were a number of studies that have been completed. And I guess the question that we have now is, so what? You know, because many of those studies obviously would have potential land use implications. So did something come out of those studies that we need to be taking into consideration that maybe you're going to tweak more than just place type? In terms of where we've been suggesting future land use?
And I think that's a, that's a good one for whenever. I think that for one of these meetings, because we were talking about combining some of them. But one of the meetings is just going to be completely for engineering. So we're going to try to get the engineering department, Kevin and Brian, in here so we can really talk about that as a group, I think would be a good idea. Can I see that from you? Whenever we had discussed what's next amongst y'all, we had. One, two, three, maybe four workshops. So one would be that mobility engineering, one would be natural resources and cultural resources, one would be land use and built environment. And then the remaining ones would be the last workshop. How do we want to plan these, like, schedule them? What did you think we should?
I don't, I don't know if that's going to work because it's, it's going to be like herding cats because unfortunately, life happens and things change. I wonder, and I'd ask everybody here, might it not be easier for you folks to find a place as nice as this where we have a set time and allow us to plan around it? I don't know if you guys think that's better or worse, but I think trying to get eight or nine people to agree on one thing is.
Okay.
It's going to be a challenge.
Yeah, or I can choose maybe like five different times and then I'll still send out the poll and see which one gets the most people or something and choose that one. We'll, we'll learn as we get, but yeah.
I take it we're not going to use a consultant like we did last time? Okay.
Yes.
The follow-up to the comment I had was. I threw was part of the implementation strategies that came out of the plan that we currently have. But now that those studies have been completed, are any of the departments sharing with you new studies that they're wanting to add that need to get included as part of changes to the update? Or is that something as we have these workshops, we can talk through with?
Yeah, because I, especially with the, whenever they're working with LATS, there's a lot that's, I don't, I know within that, are you talking specifically like mobility?
Really with any of the departments, I think. Because a lot of times, once you complete a study, you know, what's next on their priority list in terms of what they need to understand to do their jobs?
Yeah, and I think with that LATS one that was discussed, there's going to be like 20 different things that are going to come out of that. So I think that's their next list of corridors or intersections to really hone in on.
Or site and knowing within that sub watershed, if it's already high imperviousness or low, high imperviousness or low imperviousness can certainly have an impact. I think in terms of our deliberations as to whether or not it's really going to have that much of a significant impact or not.
Yes, and I can work with Courtney Kimmell and Chris Kirair on getting that information from them. And we can bring that back to you all so you have it for consideration. If it's, I don't know all of the mechanisms that go into place regarding what we require be considered moving forward with different types of projects that come to you all. But if that's something that you're interested in pursuing, I can absolutely get that information for you.
You mentioned reaching out to communities.
Yes.
You know, like Tata Island, Galawasi Island, you know, where obviously the rising seas are going to be a problem.
Absolutely.
Exactly how does that process occur?
So we'll be scheduling public meetings. We'll likely be working with the council representatives for the different districts to help schedule those public meetings. When we did the comprehensive overhaul, comprehensive plan overhaul back in 2020, 2020, 2021, that's how we did things. We scheduled meetings at community centers, leaning on our council members to be there and help get the word out. And then we had information about the changes to the comprehensive plan that were being considered so that when the public got there, they could review those.
Have been annexed. They want to reach out to the city as well?
Okay, yes.
Perhaps have a city representative there in whatever we're going to be dealing with so that they can address it and how it's affecting the county.
Yes, that's an excellent recommendation. And we'll make sure to include municipal staff representation at these public meetings.
One of the things I would ask each of the commissioners to consider doing, and that is, go back and reread the comprehensive plan, the work plan, and the atlas. I mean, you will find there's a lot of information in there. That would be very useful to just know as your starting point. It was a wonderful document compared to what we had done before. And I think we can make it all the greater if we really focus on what's important and what we've seen happen over the last five years.
And to save you all time, we can send out links where you can find all those things online if you don't already have them bookmarked like myself.
One little question. Under, on the slide, under new policy directions, more emphasis on adequate public facilities. So I'm linking that to all the doc recommendations. What do you mean by public facilities? Like rec centers, docs?
Well, so at least for this one here, we're talking about making sure with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we're having adequate parks and recreation facilities, but we can.
Oh, has that been written yet or no?
I believe that was one of the things that was already completed, right? And there were maybe a handful of projects, if I recall, that were, I think you said there were 20 different projects that were in various states of progress there.
there were 20 different projects that were in various states of progress there. Yeah. But we can also take into consideration any, any of the other public facilities that you all see a need for. I mean, this is, this is really a time to reshape what we have, to reflect our current day conditions, those things that we didn't necessarily see coming back in 2021 when we adopted them. We can, this is our opportunity to, to address all of that.
I liked what Gail said before about, you know, what about a boat landing, you know, on the Combe River, for example? That's sort of got dropped out last time. They, St. Helena people have wanted a really decent rec center at Scott forever. So I was glad, I don't know if that's the unnamed one that you mentioned. I mean, there's a playground, we saw that, but is that where the new rec center is going to be?
Yeah, and maybe what we can do is get access to some of these plans to help share with you guys so you can see what's, what's been identified. And especially, I wrote that note about the Combe Landing so we can know.
Oh, the new one will be the rec center out there.
Yeah. In Sheldon.
They had to tear it down because of mold.
Her original question was, was with regard to public facilities. And you start talking about parks and recreation. When I think of public facility, I think of like this building, you know, I'm not thinking about parks and recreation. I'm confused.
Okay. Public facilities is a relatively broad term. It's gonna be anything really that the public has access to and that serves the public. So when I'm thinking about public facilities, I'm also thinking about things that we don't control, like our Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority and our, our transportation system to some degree we have control over and those types of things. So I think, I was trying to answer Cecily's question, which seemed like it was geared more towards the recreational type public facilities, though I could have been wrong on that one.
My question is actually the same as yours, which is I just didn't understand the definition.
Yes, yeah. And so, and like I said, what we can do is gather all of that information for you all so that we can start to address any concerns or changes that aren't reflected.
I do want to say also.
Okay.
Just what it's going to be. So that was just kind of an example that we. Have been done in our master plans. Those are like kind of the example, but it's not.
Okay, so fire departments, school districts.
Right.
Yeah, they have.
Hightower.
Add probably something that you can.
Okay, I got it.
Anything else?
Well, thank you very much for that. And we look forward to working hard with you in the next 12, 13 months, 14 months. And to, speaking to that, I'm going to go on to, if we're finished with that subject, I'm going to go on to chairman's report administrative items. Just think, could you just come up and, you have, you have a status on, we have some forms for people to fill out. I had asked Kristen pull together the, where we're at on training, who still needs the training, where we are with the conflict of interest statements, the ones we still might have. We may have some discrepancies. You think he may have turned it in, Kristen doesn't have a copy of it, so we can straighten that out here. And the, and the last one, there's, there's five of us whose term is up next year. Four in February and one in April. You, and it would like to continue on the commission, there's a letter. Not done automatically anymore. And if you don't say anything, they'll take you right off and somebody will take your place. So if you would like to continue to be on, to go through all this comprehensive plan stuff. Go for it.
Is that supposed to be a draw?
What fun.
I'm going to have you redo yours. It's sent over, it's sent over to me, I think it was like the whole.
Everybody know their status?
So I have up for next year, Riedel, Ross, Murray, Henny and Miller. And I have Ross and Millers and now I have yours. Is anyone else? No? And then conflict of interest, I have Eds, I have Ross, Myers, Murray, Henny and Miller. So I need Cecily, did you, Cecily?
For doing it last year when I did my re-up, but I'm happy to do it again.
Okay, so you.
Right, it's two sides, I totally remember doing this.
But I didn't when I re-upped it.
Who's the recipient's name on these?
Oh, just ignore that, I'll just fill it in if it's needed.
Kristen, could you just send us the online contact or whatever it is for the continuing education?
Take a class in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Flattering me when you were doing.
Why you write like this? Because you grew up in that era where everything is going to be right. Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah.
Help you with your questions, Scott.
All right, is that it?
Yeah, and I'll send out stuff for continuing education and whatever I don't have for training.
I wanted to get to you, this is, we started the last quarter of the game, so to speak. And so it's timely to fill out these forms because the holidays will be upon us before too long and it'll be easy to forget them. Even I don't have anything else under sermons. Anybody have anything they would like to add for the good or the cause?
Can I put in a plug for the state representative ad hoc? There's, there's a Shannon Erickson who are, is our, well, she's, I guess she's my representative, I don't know about the rest of y'all. But she was put in charge, a co-chair with a slew of other representatives throughout the state for an ad hoc transportation modernization committee. And they've been doing road shows for the past two months now. They've done them in Greenville, they did them up in Ori County and now they're doing one in Beaufort. It's an opportunity to either submit a written statement or question, to address your concerns. Mine are largely about the concurrency issue and transportation impact analysis and how crappy they are, at least my opinion. But it's an opportunity to present either in written form or you can get up and speak at Beaufort High School, which is right near the huddle house here on Ceylan Parkway at 2 o'clock on Wednesday and make them aware of. I've answered the question probably like you would probably ask. This is just a fact gathering mission of theirs. If anything were to change at all, it'll probably be three to five years down the road before it goes through a bill proposal or first, second, third readings and then finally would get to the governor to change the way things are done. But I think we all know transportation is a mess throughout South Carolina and this is your opportunity to speak up if you feel the need to do so.
Anything else? Okay, without objection, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.